Welcome everybody here. If we all would, let's rise for clear allegiance. So, one moment of silence.
Clear allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Stand for a moment of silence, please. There is no change in the agenda, so we'd ask for the motion to approve.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Motion second, all in favor, four over. We've got minutes to approve from August 29th, 2024, and November the 4th of 2024. I trust everybody has read over these.
And September 15th.
I'm assuming you're right, so I move.
September 15th, there's three sets of my.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I'll move.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion, all in favor, four over. Open floor for public comment time, any citizen. Encouraged to comment on any items requiring the attention of commissioners. Guidelines is on the board yet. You have three minutes to speak. Seeing no movement, my audience will close the public comment section, move on down. Presentation of the general business for information, April Ham.
Good evening. So, the first thing I have tonight is a proposed change to our fixed asset policy. And this is a result of conversations with auditors. We are currently finishing up our fiscal year 25 audit. So, these are some suggestions from the auditors. And I have incorporated everything that you see in red is a proposal. Can I answer any questions?
Anybody have any questions? Here and now, we'll move on down to item number two. Mr. Bill Shapley.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. We are looking for the board to decide whether they want to move ahead to approve Pratt Davis to serve on the local library board.
I think she's a good fit for the board. The board really liked her being appointed. We'll move this, it's okay with everybody, move this to next meeting.
I think she'd be good for the board, too. I probably, I probably got through high school if it hadn't been for her.
Yeah, I believe she's a good fit over there. Okay, moving on down to item number three. Mr. Bill Shapley.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, and you know, we had discussed this waiver issue before and the board had made a decision. And in order to reexamine that issue, we have to open it back up again for discussions. And I asked Heather if to step in if I say it, did I say it correctly?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, the next meeting, so it's for information, right now, it would be brought back up at the next meeting for action. One of the discussions that we've had, obviously, because of the transfer facility issue coming up, which is that we may be restructuring our fees. This is something that we're going to look at again, so it will come up. I think one of the questions was whether or not the board was able to actually vote to change the fees or the waiver for fees. And we've talked to a couple of people at the School of Government and their suggestion was that we weren't able to make the change. However, until we update our policy on how we structure the fees and implementation, the suggestion's been that we keep things the way that they've been worked, meaning if somebody brings or presents for a waiver to the board, the board will consider that and then either grant or not that waiver for somebody asking. When the fee structure changes, then we're going to implement a different type of action and how we would be able to change or not, based on some recommendations that are made by the School of Government.
Anybody have any questions for that?
Do, are we still advertising on the Facebook, I mean, on the website there? It's not livable, we don't have to pay it, just do it on our website?
I don't think we've updated anything yet. And it's probably because we know the change is going to be coming and we may have to adjust that. Once, once we figure out what the structure of the fees is going to be, then everything will end up being updated. But until then, I think we've just said we're going to leave things the way that they are. And then, once we restructure for the transfer facility, then we would update the policy.
And we did have Rita in all these internal discussions, and that's actually listed on the tax office page of the website.
So, we won't vote on this till next meeting?
Right.
Okay.
We appreciate that explanation there. So, moving on down to general business, all this will be for action. Ms. Kelly Welsh, Appalachian Health.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good to see you again. So, I am here on behalf of the opioid settlement committee and our request. Yes, can you hear me?
There you go.
There you go. Thank you. So, I'm here on behalf of the opioid settlement committee and our request is that we consider a continuous allocation of funding to the Allegheny Jail. So, this was money that was appropriated last fiscal year and that money was not spent. And so, the committee is requesting that we carry that over and allow them to follow up with that this year. And this is for addiction treatment services.
We've heard the ask, are we open the floor for a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the amended resolution.
Got a motion and a second, but Bobby, can you throw the discussion? Not all in favor, four over.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Kelly?
Yes?
You remember how fast this meeting went?
I will.
At the, at our next meeting.
I will. It was good to see you, Bobby.
Item number two, April Ham.
So, I have a general fund budget amendment. This is number five for the fiscal year. And this is actually budgeting the fund balance allocation for the transfer facility project.
Okay. All right, open the floor for a motion.
Second.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any further discussion? Not all in favor, four over. Item number three, Ms. Anne.
So, the next one, they kind of look like they're out of order a little bit, but the next one actually goes along with the first one. This is actually putting the 1.5 million into the transfer facility budget and that will be done by a transfer.
Okay. Open the floor for a motion.
Some move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion, got a second, McGregor, any questions? All in favor, four over. Go right ahead, Ms. April, moving on down.
So, the third one, the third one that we have is actually an EMS budget amendment. And they have received two grants in the past month, one from the Winston-Salem Foundation, $10,000, and one from the Roaring Gap Foundation for $15,000, and this is for training equipment.
Open floor for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and second, McGregor, any further discussion? All in favor, four over. All right, moving on down, county managers report.
One more.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's number five right there, April.
Did you want me to start, Mr. Shepherd?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, so, this is a presentation from the North Carolina Capital Management Trust. This is an organization that has been, it was actually created by a former North Carolina treasurer in 1981. This is what we have talked internally. This is our suggestion to move forward with some investing of some funds. One being the one and a half million for the transfer facility. Because any interest that we earn on that money will go to the transfer facility. That's our rules, that's the guidance and what's in place. We would also like to take 5 million of our fund balance and actually put it in this capital management trust also. This is an investment entity. It is approved by the local government commission. If you'll, will you scroll down just a little bit? Scroll down just a little bit more. Here's the participants that's currently in the North Carolina Capital Management Trust. There's 820, and as you can tell, there's 448 cities and towns that actually invest money in this trust, 100 counties, and then you've got schools, hospitals, like transportation authorities and things of that nature. The priority with the trust is actually safety first. I think there's another slide. Safety, liquidity, and yield is the priorities with this capital management trust. The liquidity aspect, we've had multiple conversations and I actually looked at four different scenarios for us to put some additional money in to get some yield and some interest to help with the projects that we have going on. We can get this money out in a day. If something were to happen catastrophic in the world, the next morning, we can get our money. It'll be back in our checking account. And this is one reason that we are recommending this entity to do some investment. So, can I answer any questions?
Are there, are there penalties for withdrawing?
There are not. No, this was actually created as a, a option for counties and cities, municipalities to invest.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
When April first talked to me about that, I'm very skeptical about this, this kind of thing. But I have to say that the research that she did on this and the multiple times that we met, I feel extremely confident that in this recommendation. I think this is, one of the things that separates this from just a regular CD is the protection that we have. And the fact that you can make a move within 24 hours if you see you get the stock market. If some terrible event happened and all of a sudden the stock market starts to crash like it did in, with the 9/11 situation, we have a chance of taking action if we needed to. But, and also what really made me feel comfortable is the, the list of organizations that have also looked at this and opted into it and are doing it. So, I strongly support her recommendation.
Did I read that right, 100 counties, there's participants in there?
Correct.
McGregor.
Yep, correct. And 448 cities and/or municipalities.
Tell them, question, are they insured like the banks are insured? They wouldn't be, wouldn't they?
No, not, not like a bank. A bank is in, and that's actually the slide that's up there right now. Because that was one of our questions when I first started talking to Mr. Shapley about this. FDIC insures bank deposits. This is actually a ti, another type of insurance that ensures this investment. So, this is approved by SEC, which is Security Exchange Commission. Like I said before, this is local government commission approved. This is, I believe, the only investment that is approved, investment entity that's approved by the LGC.
Is, there are 62 schools listed. Is that counting city schools, county schools, private schools?
It could be anything in North Carolina, yes.
But I mean, 62 is a low number.
It is, but they may not, they may not be educated about this opportunity.
Is our system part of it?
I do not know that, Bobby. Yeah, I do not know.
Or the hospital?
Only thing I was provided was that pie chart. Now, I, I can call up another county. I know we have counties around us that, that do use this opportunity.
I, I was just curious about the numbers and there's 820 total participants out of how many? Is it 850? 1,050? I mean, they just show you the good part.
Correct, and that's just the numbers.
Yeah.
Who has invested as a, I believe this was, yeah, September 25th.
I, I have no problem with it. If everybody's comfortable with it, financing, and the manager looks comfortable, I've got no problem.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Couple of questions. So, I guess this is not like annuity, so if you put your money in, would you say how much you recommended?
The actual yield that would be.
How much was you recommended to put it in there?
The one and a half that's been allocated for the transfer facility, it would be in a separate account, just kind of like we do the savings now. And then, 5 million of what we have of our fund balance.
So, not that I would oppose it, but I'm asking a question like, so if you do put the 1.5 in there and the market does go down, they don't have a flat line that it can go below. Basically, it can pull it down, correct?
It could pull it down, but hopefully the, it would be, we've made some on that.
Correct, enough to, just like any market, you know, you're gonna, it's gonna go up and down some.
Correct. It is an investment.
So, what is the savings interest that we get on ours?
It's below 3% now.
One of the reasons that we've, we wanted to do this is we need additional money for the, for the transfer station. And we want to explore all possibilities beyond tax. And we're trying to figure out how can we, you know, bring in substantial money with money that we already have in order to put back into the transfer station. And we think this is a good, strong opportunity for us to do that.
Yeah, while he's sitting on the sideline, while we're trying to figure out how are we going to move forward, it's, I don't think it's a bad idea.
Any more questions? Bobby? I don't want to. Okay, this is for action. So, we'll open the floor for a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve, any further questions? Not all in favor, four over.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, finishes up general business, moving on down to C, county manager.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, and correct me if I'm wrong on this, April, but didn't we estimate that we could take interest wise? We could bring in a couple hundred thousand?
Yes, per year.
Per year. So, the upside is, is it.
How much did you say per year?
200,000. I've got a lot of things to, to tell you in my report this month, just been a lot of activity in the last three weeks. Thanks to the really hard work of David and April, we got all of the information in that we needed to by September 30th to be able to apply for that interest-free loan with Blue Ridge Energy. That was, I want you all to know that, I mean, it was this long shot whether we'd be able to get, get it all in because we talked to them, what, in the beginning of September or was it the end of August or? And there's a tremendous amount of data and material that they needed. And these folks, I mean, this became our top priority was getting that, that info in and we wouldn't have been able to do it without the, the hard work of those two and, and their teams of people. So, thank you to you guys for making that deadline. So, now we won't know, now that the wait is on, so we probably won't know till January?
Possibly.
Yeah. Whether we get that loan, it's very competitive, but we are hoping that we will get it. So, some of these are just events that I've attended and I was invited to the Blue Ridge National Heritage meeting that occurred here in Sparta a couple of weeks ago. And there was, there were probably 30 people or so that attended that event. It was put on by Angie Chandler. Attended the Blue Ridge Energy Economic Development Luncheon in Lenore, North Carolina. Went to the 50th anniversary of the Laurel Springs Fire Department in Laurel Springs. And they probably had, I don't know, 75 people, 100 people there. It was a good, good turnout. Attended the Chamber of Commerce Luncheon and here in Sparta. We hired Wes Brenniger to, to be the Veterans Association Director and we're real pleased to have him on board. He started, what day did he start? What was the date?
First or something.
Yeah, I think it was the first of October.
Yeah, September 30th.
September 30th, so he's hit ground running and he had, he saw six people on his, his first day. There were people waiting in lines, but he's doing a great job so far. We also hired the grant writer. And now, she's got to put notice in at where she works. And it's going to take a little bit of time before she gets here. She'll be here November the 11th is her start date. And her name is Rahel Bezurk. And she, she went to Appalachian State and to Villanova University. And we were really impressed with her in the interview process. I think we've got somebody that will be a real star for us. And she knows that the pressure's going to be on, you know, to produce. But we have, also want to thank the School of Government has done a great job in supporting us. And actually, we're part of the interview process to help us select the candidate that we have and has offered to, you know, provide some mentoring if that's needed as we move forward with this project. So, we're really excited about that. Had another meeting with, with Udi Gross from the new community that's coming into, the new Jewish community that's coming into town and moving that process along and helping them to figure out the things that they need and what the county can respond to it. I met with the director of, not met with him, but I, I spoke with the director, not the director, but the manager of Food Lion here yesterday. And we talked for about 20 minutes about what he had done in the store in order to prepare for the special foods that they needed. He's already taken that action and made that occur. So, he got permission from the regional folks to, to make that into reality. So, there's now kosher sections in part of the grocery store. Let's see, we met with Civic Plus, folks that, that you, some of you hired, what, a couple of years ago?
Yes, it's been 18 months.
To look at the ordinances that the county has, but we had a, a technical glitch. And so, we're gonna, we rescheduled, I think, for next week? 21st, okay. In order to go through what changes they're recommending to the ordinances that we, we have had in place over the years, some needed updating. Certainly Heather has recommended that also, so we're looking forward to that. Attended a dinner, a very nice dinner for the, the Blue Ridge Energy Community Leaders Dinner that happened in Jefferson at a really nice place, had a great speaker come in. And the speaker really opened a lot of people's eyes. He, he was talking about the different generations within the workplace today. And generations being the generations defined by you're a baby boomer or a Gen Z or a Gen X and how communication between the, the different generations can affect efficiency and how misunderstandings can occur between the different generations. And pointed out a lot of things that people of my generation might view as laziness or disinterest or from some of the younger generations and pointed out how they view what they're being requested to do. I think it was eye-opening for everybody. I remember the youngest, the youngest people in there, they put up, there were some people that were probably 21, 22 years old. And they put a picture of, in a library of somebody opening a drawer and going through and looking for a book. And they asked those people, what is that? And they said, they didn't know, maybe it was some sort of file or, or something like that. It was, it was the card catalog. And just to show how, you know, we've moved away from, and they, you know, they also said, a lot of young people say, why do old people always say roll down the window? You know, what is that all about, you know?
No air conditioning.
Well, you know, the rolling handle, you know, from the past that they have never seen. So, there was a good, good speech. And I think I'm going to talk to my department heads a little bit about some of the stuff that we need to think about from a generational standpoint. Tasha Roundtree came here from, it's a lot of Blue Ridge Energy stuff on here. They, they've been good partners to us, came here to meet with us. And we had an extensive discussion about affordable housing and try to make, trying to make affordable housing and childcare available in our community. And I'm going to a couple of events next week, aren't I?
Yes.
To talk about affordable housing and be, be bringing some information back on opportunities we might have for some grant possibilities to help us in those two areas. Because if we are trying to entice businesses here, but there's no place for their employees to live or no childcare for them, we gotta, it's chicken before the egg type thing. We gotta figure out how do we solve some of these problems to make our, our community even more attractive. And the Allegheny County Employee Picnic was a huge success. And we had, I think, close to 100 of the employees attend. And, and some of you were there and, you know, we appreciate that. I think, you know, Bill and Timmy and Greg had a chance to attend. And I think we had some good camaraderie there and just had fun, had a chance to just, you know, I asked everybody to meet, try to meet two people that they'd never met before. You know, because some of the departments don't see people in the other departments. So, if you do that, you've got maybe two new friends that you've, that you've created. But what a great group of people. It was a very warm event, I think. And appreciate you all's participation in that. That's about it. That's what we've got. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
With county commissioner comments.
I just want to make a mention, I hate to see Brian Killen gone. I didn't know he's gone to the picnic, but he's a good county employee. He's gone now, real good. And I want to thank April and Lisa and Bill for the extra work we put on, we have to go through right now. You know what I'm talking about.
Thank you.
And picnic was real good and me and Bill worked the fair. It went real good this year. Went real good.
Yeah.
That's all I got tonight.
Yeah, the fair was great.
Thank you, Greg. Timmy?
Sounds like you've been busy. Yeah, we appreciate your work and your involvement with all that different things because that, that creates opportunities that we might, you know, where there's grants, whether it's, as you say, people. And, and Allegheny County over the years has really depended on grants because we have a, you know, we have a, a small revenue base and because of our county size and our population and it's, the grants has been something that we really depend on a ton. I mean, that's, the school wouldn't be built without some kind of, which that's a similar to a grant. But if you don't get out there and talk about them and go to those different places, you're never going to find out if there, there's things other than our money's available. But yeah, I, I, this is the third year that I've been to those picnics and I enjoy them thoroughly because it's, it is a way, I didn't get to talk to everybody, but it's always fun to see the county employees come over and enjoy a picnic and enjoy everybody's conversation because they're always doing their job, you know? And like you say, a lot of folks, we have enough county employees that scattered around that they don't, they don't get to see each other, they don't get to talk to each other, they don't even know who's working where, you know? So, yeah, that, that was, that's always, it's always been a pleasure to be a part of that. And yes, and I think the Ag Fair did very well this year. As far as the turnout. I mean, as far as the turnout, possibly the, you know, the admission. And I always, I always enjoyed going up there and being a part of that also. I didn't take as much part as you guys did, but you all love taking our money anyway. But last but not least, I wanted to say that I really, over the past week, I just wanted to tell everybody how much I've appreciated the love, the prayers, the thoughts, the support. That my family has been blessed with, and I didn't realize it was that much support in this county. But I just want to thank everybody, and I can't thank you enough, I can't say enough words how much it's meant to the entire family, and from my children to my grandchildren to all the way through, so just, just wanted to thank everybody for that, and also remind that this is the start of October where we have the, you know, the recognition of the breast cancer, which a lot of people struggle with, and and just want to recognize and that this is the month that we do recognize how the tough things that people go through, and where mothers, I mean, my mother had breast cancer, and she pulled through it, and I've had lots of people, all of us probably had people in the family, and it's still a serious thing, and like to just recognize that, and honor those people that's got through it, and the ones that's passed on to remember them. And that's it.
Thank you.
Well, just thank everybody for the support.
We appreciate it.
Well, I ain't got too much to add to that, but I will do want to thank Timmy's wife, Jenny, for fashionists with the, with the ribbons to make us aware of Breast Cancer Month, and we certainly appreciate her thinking of us. County picnic was a great success, it was a good atmosphere out there that day, everybody was having fun. I don't know who furnished the food, but it was great food, and, and don't know who put all that together, but whoever it was done a great job.
Our kitchen staff did the food.
Okay, it was very good, very good. Who put it on, who put all this together, right quick?
We have a picnic committee.
A picnic committee, yeah.
They done a great job. Done a great job. Truck or treat? Pardon?
Let's see, Tim, the picnic committee was, I'm sorry that I-
Oh, go ahead.
Tiffany and Candace and Lisa.
Delila.
Delila.
Maslow.
April. April.
Rita. Rita.
Rita.
Sam. And Kel.
And Kelvin.
That's quite a challenge, but they done a great job.
Yeah.
Great job. Uh, fire prevention's this month, October, and the parade will be October the 9th, I don't know exactly what time, 6:00 or 7:00 o'clock? Anybody aware? Come on, Zach, you're supposed to know this stuff. Anyway, about dark. Uh, Truck or Treat will be held out at the firegrounds this year on the 31st, and that'll be a, that'll be a good event, be plenty of candy, and, and for all that stuff, and, and I want to remember Bob Bamberg, his wife passed away the other day, and Bob's much of this county, he's been with the newspaper for years, and I don't know exactly how long, but Bob's been a vital part of this county, and let's all keep them in our thoughts and prayers, as well as Timmy and Bobby's family, they, they all need prayers, and we appreciate everything. All righty, anybody got anything else? If not, we've got a crest, request for a closed session. General Statute 143-318 dot 11 dot 4. Economic Development entertaining motion to go into closed session.
Same way. Second.
Motion second, all in favor? For what? Lost my pen here somewhere. See ya.
Me and I gotta go? I think that the, I think if I remember correctly, the decree is seven, that I do, that it's dark.
Okay, I was like it was.
It's in the paper, and I can vouch for that, I can vouch for my memory right this very second.
Thanks, Zach.
Thank you, Zach.
Take care of y'all, good luck.
Thank you.